Let's be noted that he showed up at 501, so it's okay. We're glad you're here, Randy. First item of business, something we enjoy doing. We've got a swearing in for a new police officer with the city of Barstown. But before I do the swearing in, I'd like to ask Chief Cressick to introduce our newest hire on our Barstown Police Board.
All right. I'd like to introduce Daniel Starr. Daniel comes to us from Springfield where he is a seven-year veteran. He was their farms instructor, driving instructor, and he was a PTO. He was one of their, I think he was the only training officer that Springfield had. He is a resident in Nelson County. He attended Washington County High School and Eastern Kentucky University. And so I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to introduce your guest.
I'm here tonight with my girlfriend Sasha Hardies. I would like to say thank you to everybody for having me out here, especially the mayor and the chief, giving me the opportunity to come over here and serve with you guys. I'm excited to be here. I've been looking to come over to Barstown for quite a while and join some of my other friends that work here. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, I get to know each of you, and I really appreciate some of you coming up and introducing yourselves to me. I'm gonna have trouble keeping track of all these names so far, so... But it's nice to meet you guys, and I look forward to serving with you. Sir.
Mayor Wakefield, I saw her Sunday nights. He told me to make sure, when you got sworn in, you raised your hand really high.
I'll do it for her.
Daniel, welcome. Come on up, and I'll do the swearing in. Follow up on what Councilor Jekyll said. I told the chief and Daniel this afternoon when he was finishing paperwork that, in addition to the normal application that we typically do of some of our own venues around here, and I did that even on Chief. I've found people who went to the same church he went to, and people that are coaching wrestling and all kinds of, we went pretty deep on that. But I want to say this, I told Daniel that I did talk to some people that are well-known in the Washington County and Springfield area, and they all gave you some very nice recommendations, so the pressure is on you to... Good reputation that you bring from your service with Springfield, and we're so happy to have you join our team here at the city of Barstown. So, welcome, and if you would raise your right hand. I'll give you the oath of office. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. I be faithful and true to the Commonwealth so long as I continue to a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of police officer according to law. Now, I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not followed duels with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so how may I go?
Adieu.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You get me confused with any of the other councilmen? That's a problem.
Congratulations, Dan. Thank you, guys.
I know we have a few people in the audience that they have a couple items on their agenda, so we won't recognize them at this time. We'll wait till they're on the agenda, but... Are there any council comments? Anyone have anything to comment on from the council this evening? Okay, we'll move on then. My report is that we're just taking care of business day in and day out, a lot to take care of. But I do know we're gonna have some heavier agendas coming later this month, so stay tuned. Jessica's over there smiling, and Rashay's over there crying, I think. HRB with none of the work coming through there, so Jessica and I spent quite a bit of time the last two days working on projects, so... Anyhow, if you have had time to review the council meeting of January 22nd, if there's no addition or corrections, we'll approve them by unanimous consent. Next item is the Bourbon City Mile, and I know Elliot Mattingly submitted the proposal to us, and Elliot's with us this evening. If you'd like to stand up and make a few comments, if anyone... I don't know where Chief went, so I guess when you said Joe Sealy approved all this, I guess it's gonna be all right. Go ahead, Elliot.
So, I'm Elliot Mattingly.
And I'm Amanda Mattingly.
So, we are both physical therapists. I work here in town, she works in Lowell and here in town as well. And we are hoping to host a mile race on National Bourbon Day. So, the difference in our race versus a lot of these other 5Ks around town is just a one-mile race that's almost like, it's almost like a, really, a front for the event, because on National Bourbon Day, we wanna do something that celebrates our town, celebrates bourbon, and celebrates some things we have to offer, and we are gonna use Spalding Hall with Linda McCloskey and use Oscar Gass Whiskey Museum as our finish. So, after somebody does the race, we're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have bourbon tastings, and then we're gonna have the tour of Oscar Gass Whiskey Museum for everybody who hosts the race. So, it's just a way that we feel like can really highlight our town, give somebody a really cool event to kick off National Bourbon Weekend now, and get a little healthy too, so...
And another aspect of the race that's important for us, and something we're hoping to make more prominent in Barstown, is this is a very eco-friendly race. There will be no plastic offered at all. Our food trucks are gonna be supplied with recyclable or vegetable-based utensils, cups, things like that, and we're gonna have lots of recycling, compostable, and then just generic trash bins that we're hoping we're gonna be able to share with the town and others who host events around town. And then our main hope is that the proceeds and everything from this race are not just gonna be for us there. We're gonna give it back to town, and our hope is that we can help restore or build new hiking and running trails in town, and we have our site set on the community park as our kind of first area to concentrate on.
We just, we went back there yesterday, or Tuesday. It was pretty. And it's just kinda like, you can't really tell where the trails are anymore, and there's just all this beautiful property back there that you can just go and see, like limestone, the moss growing on there, the creeks, that's just not explored. And then I think, as much as we want people to come to Barstown for bourbon, we want them to come and stay and do other things too, so if they have hiking trails, and we have a lot of people that would love to come run with us in Barstown, but we don't have that option, give them other opportunities to see what we have to offer. So, that's our goal, is to invest this straight back into our town.
Mr. Mattingly, so you're saying that the proceeds are gonna donate to the city's general fund? Is that what you're saying?
Well, our goal is specific for trails, so I don't really know how this works. You know, this is our first time with city council or anything of this nature, so what we are hoping to do is to almost create a way for us to access the trails and clean them up. Like, we have about 50 or 60 people in our running group, like between all the schools with their cross-country teams, we would have a ton of access to cleaning up the trails and building new trails. We have a relationship with Green Space in E-Town, who they've done the Freeman Lake Trails and all this, so we wanna make it a little bit more official, but our money would go to hopefully something more specific than just a general fund.
Which is the Recreation Department.
Yeah, the Recreation Department would be in charge of that, yeah.
Sounds like something we'd like to work with beyond, and appreciate your enthusiasm and ingenuity to put this together. I think Chief's here now, so we can see if Joe Sealy signed off. It's a pretty unique route.
Route, yeah.
This is great.
Yeah.
It's an easy mile.
It's an easy mile, and we wanted to be so fast.
It's in your tires, and you got it. Done, so...
And our hope is...
We're hoping if it's just a mile instead of a five K.
Well, see, then there's the family mile where you guys can walk it, and that's what Bill's gonna train for. So, our goal, like, we wanna recruit some, make it an elite competition. We're actually gonna give a little prize money away for the top winners to try to draw in some new people to Barstown, because we don't have anything that offers anything like that. Like, our 5Ks are great, but I feel like they're very local. We want outsiders to come in and experience Barstown as well.
Joe has been in communication with them, and so he has signed off on that, so...
So, the only question I would have, and as the mayor alluded to earlier, if Joe Sealy signed up on it, I'm okay with it, but how exactly are you going to? I noticed you have five races that are 15 minutes each, so are you doing a total closure for the amount, or are you trying to open and close Fifth Street for each race?
So, luckily enough, like, we had somebody offer us, like, 50 cross-country kids, like, this weekend. So, if you guys need volunteers, because I got 50 kids, you can have them. What we'll do is we're gonna have a meeting where we train everybody on how to do it, but like, since the race is only gonna be open for about 15 minutes, that's gonna leave another 15 minutes where, like, people can go through and go, like, really, I guess it's kind of a soft close?
Yeah. For the majority of the races, like, people will be going at a pretty good speed, and so they're only gonna be passing a street for a very short amount of time, so when nobody's there, vehicles will be allowed to go through.
Only car closures will be at the end, so it would be at Templin and East Street Foster.
So, the length of Fifth would be closed from 5:30 to 9:00 then? Because 5:30 on a Friday is pretty busy.
Now, crossing here would be allowed, like, just based on volunteers, like, helping through, and then just the traffic to go around, so going from Templin up to Fourth Street and back around. So, I feel like the traffic flow, it might be slowed a little bit, but I think from the value of the event itself, and with the volunteers kinda directing, maybe using, like, detour signs or other options that we might have, that would really make for less headache.
And we plan on sending, like, letters out to the people who all live in that vicinity, warning them that this is going to be happening in there.
And thinking that.
Yes.
That's part of the recommendation that Joe sends out, that they have to educate and send letters to the residents and business owners.
Yeah, as I said, Joe's good with it, I'm good with it. I was just curious how you're gonna do the 15-minute thing, so...
Well, this ties in to tourism, and I think the Chamber and Main Street are gonna be having more events related to National Bourbon Day. I think our street concert, I think, is going to be moved to that Saturday night. So, this is sort of, really amps up that recognition of that day, which is a pretty important day, I think, in the bourbon capital of the world. So, it's great that we're having another event, and possibly a couple more that'll tie into this weekend.
And right now, we have Heaven Hill, Barton, Lux Row, Kentucky Owl, and Barstown Bourbon. Buexix and The Flying Pig have all jumped in to be sponsors, as well as some other, like, small realtors or running souls out of E-Town, so like, we're getting a lot of support for this race, because it's pretty unique. Like, there's no other race like it in the state. There's like, there's one one-mile race, but there's none that does, like, none that does, like, the different sets. Like, they just do one one-mile race. So, like, this whole event is unique.
It's not one of our trade boards.
May I ask any other questions, man? Thank you, man. I would like to ask a motion, and then we approve the request for the street closures per their work with Chief, Assistant Chief Joe Sealy.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Bourbon City Mile. That's gonna be held on 6/14/2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second. We have any other discussion? Seeing nine, and all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you all. Thank you all.
This is part of our running group here at the class, was one thing. That's right.
Well, thank you all.
Congratulations.
Wish you the best of luck. Okay, we have a second reading of our classification and compensation plan, and a motion then to approve it, and a second, and then we would ask, I think, the city attorney to read the summary. Can you get a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to do that. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number B-2019-02, the classification and compensation plan on this second reading, and ask our city attorney to read the summary.
We have a motion, you have a second, I was just saying. Second, the Frank? Okay. Go ahead and ask the city attorney to read the summary.
Summary of ordinance B-2019-02, classification and compensation plan. In order amending and adopting as amended in ordinance style, quote, "an ordinance creating classification plan and compensation plan," end quote. This ordinance amends Chapter 35 Employment Policies, the Classification Plan and Compensation Plan of the Municipal Code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title, and pay grade, and setting the ranges for pay grade for city employees for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 and subsequent years. The amendments and additions reflecting number of positions, title, and pay grade respectively are: Finance, striking four, insert two; Customer Service Representative, one, two, three, parentheses, part-time, parentheses, grade 103; Inserting two positions, Receptionist, part-time, grade 102; Police, inserting two, striking Police Captain, inserting Assistant Police Chief, grade 116; Fire, striking one, insert three positions, Captain, strike Fire Marshal, insert Shift Commander, grade 112; Striking one position, striking Lieutenant Training, and striking the grade of 110; Striking 10, inserting 9, Firefighter slash EMT, grade 107; Cable slash Internet, one Cable Superintendent, strike grade 121, insert 120; Strike 3, insert 4 positions, Cable Technician 3, grade 113; Strike 5, insert 4, Cable Installer 3, grade 109; Strike 2, insert 3, IT Support Specialist 2, grade 104; And then adding 1 Construction Manager, grade 115. This ordinance or parts of ordinance is in conflict herewith or repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. I certify that this summary is prepared by Audrey Hayden, City Attorney.
Thank you, Audrey. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a second reading, so I'll call on individual votes, those that are in favor, if you would signify as saying aye, and I'll start with Councilman Dones. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, then the next order is, the next item is the municipal order N-2019-3. Under job descriptions, I would ask our head of our HR, Greg Ashworth, if he wants to comment on these as they have been presented.
They just go along with the changes that were just made to pay and classification plan. The receptionist, the shift commander, and the construction manager are all new positions, and then we changed some of the language in the Cable Superintendent, the Assistant Fire Chief, and the Lieutenant Station Commander. Very little changes in the other ones, and to include the three new positions. I've already sent off the changes for the fire department's job descriptions to Frankfurt to get their approval, but we can go and make, we can go ahead and make our changes without their approval first. They'll approve.
Then I would need a motion then to approve municipal order N-2019-03 as it relates to job descriptions.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to ask the council to approve municipal order number N-2019-03, as it retains the municipal order amending the job description for the C of Barstown, where we established the municipal order number N-2018-07.
Okay, I have a motion to add a second.
Second.
Second with Councilman Dones. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, can I just interject to say that it says January 5th, and it should say February 5th at the bottom, so if we can just amend, amend that to reflect today's date?
Thank you.
Yes, good catch there.
Thank you, Audrey.
I looked at it yesterday and didn't see it all today, but...
I looked at it 10 times, I didn't see it happen sometimes, so thank you for that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any...
Necessary corrections.
Okay, and with correction on the date to reflect today's date, February 5th. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, you probably needed to refresh your iPad late today. We had a one-word misspelled on the contract under Corwin's Crossing Force Main Evaluation. It said, on the contract, it said Corwin's Creek.
And it still does on the document that they have, Mayor. Couldn't get it done in time for the meeting.
So, we have one correction in the contract that should read Corwin's Crossing Force Main Evaluation, not Corwin's Creek. The HDR submitted it with the wrong wording there, so that's the only correction, but...
Jessica provided that to me this afternoon. I just didn't get it to you guys in time, and I apologize for that, but it'll be uploaded, and the rest of the contract reflects the proper wording of Corwin's Crossing, so...
So, Jessica, would you like to talk to, what this is in regard to, why we're doing this evaluation?
Yes. There is currently the Corwin's Crossing Force Main. It is a 10-inch force main that allows waste, sanitation sewer waste to be pumped from Corwin's Crossing Development out near Samuels back towards town, and eventually makes its way to the Jerry Riley Waste Water Treatment Plant. There are several stations, pump stations, that pump into that force main, and again, make its way back to town. But that force main is just that, it is under pressure, and it's getting to be pretty complicated and end-up engineering to predict and analyze that force main as you get multiple stations pumping in. You've got a lot of hydraulic head that you're pumping against depending on which pumps run on and off, and they're pretty basic. There's not telemetry. They're not talking to each other and saying, oh, I'm on, oh, I'm not on. So, at certain times of the day, all five stations could be pumping during the peak hour when everyone comes home from work and takes the showers, does their laundry, and stuff like that. So, that creates some stresses. So, when you do everything based on an average daily flow, it's great. And I keep, as our community is growing and the economy is good, there's always those questions about, oh, there's land for sale, and I would like the ability to get on sewer in this western area of the community, and just having a better understanding of what can be upsized onto that system, what can this existing infrastructure handle, and run some various scenarios about how much more capacity this infrastructure truly has, because it's not a simple infrastructure. It's not just a gravity line. So, that this proposal with HDR, they were involved in the original design of that force main, and they have submitted this proposal to run the various scenarios and give some feedback about that available capacity, and if there are any, and create some recommendations in order to get some more longevity out of that. I want to be very, very careful about making sure that I preserve the capacity that the community has already committed to go into that system before we allow new things that were never planned for to go in. So, we've got Corwin's Crossing Development that is not fully developed yet. There's still anywhere from, I think, maybe 40% of the property still left to be developed. You know, Miller Springs is not all developed out, and so forth. So, again, it's just complicated, and I wanna make sure that we do a good service to the community and our sewer customers, and are planning that appropriately and not overstretching, and start planning, and start planning on how we can address that growth and what's the right steps. I'm asking the council to approve, the mayor to authorize into this agreement, and I will also note that large developments or significant developments that are proposing to go in recently, but they needed an answer about to buy a property, they have, I have requested that they help pay a proportion of this study and run that scenario as part of this. So, there's going to be some small outside contribution to this study to help run those, you know, development scenarios into this model.
You say you got outside people that were wanting to help offset this 26-5?
Right. There's some property that, hey, I wanna buy this, I wanna add X number of units, and it's not a small number of units. You know, can I, can I get, is there capacity? And I looked at the percentage of what that development is, you know, how many units of, you know, home units or single-family residence that would equate to, and said, okay, that would be a percentage that you could put towards helping to pay for this 26-5. So, I'm trying to get a little bit of, you know, rate payer's money to help compensate for some of those additional scenarios that I might not otherwise ask them to run based on where they're wanting to look at putting growth.
If we, if we allow them to contribute to the 26-5, is that in any way buying the city into any type of agreement that we have to let them produce so many units or build so many units?
No. It was just to be able to feel comfortable that whenever we come back with the answer, that we all feel that it's a correct answer, because again, this modeling is pretty complicated. I didn't wanna say, ooh, I think maybe we can do that, and an individual civil site designer may not also have the tools available to run that and find that out themselves, you know, and run it themselves. So, we've, over, over the years, we've had, you know, the addition of Thomas Nelson High School. They have their own individual pump station that goes into that system. There's several more that are on. If you look at the Hometown Pizza, I believe that's called...
Royal Crest.
Royal Crest. Pretty Business Park Pump Station, there's Miller Springs Pump Station, all go into that. At one point in time, we even had the hospital have their own individual pump station that pumped in. So, again, just trying to get some real answers so that we can kind of plan our growth and make sure that we're moving in the right direction, and I'm hoping that there's gonna be some options that come about with this study. Obviously, the more scenarios I ask them to run, you know, maybe we might get a little beyond what the scope is. I've kind of got some set scenarios based in here, but that's what my goal is.
If we approve this tonight, do you think the individuals that have verbally committed will say, well, the city's gonna do it, I'll just let them pay for it, and if that happens, will that hurt us?
The one that's actually, because it was a timing situation, I didn't necessarily need to have this done right now, but they've already in writing committed to a dollar amount towards this study, and I've got that in writing in a document with them. So, again, because they were needing to know that, an answer sooner rather than waiting till maybe the fall or this time next year.
Yeah, because they already own some land that's starting...
That's adjacent.
...for residential, but it's a number requirement, residential, back to, you know, we're obligated, I think, towards the Corwin's Crossing.
Yes.
You know, that there always has to be enough capacity for that to be finished out, because they built it.
Exactly.
And they have the universal agreement with them, so...
Now, from a real estate perspective, that's the hottest end of the county. That's where everybody wants to live.
It is, and it's a sticky situation that I'm in, because I wanna make sure that I am making those right calls and I'm reserving enough capacity, but not everything always works as well on paper as it does in reality. You know, we get inflow and infiltration into the system, and not everybody, you know, the pumps don't kick on super consistently. It's whenever the usage is there, so...
Yeah, I think it's time for this...
It's time to do this with the growth.
I'm gonna entertain a motion and approve the contract with HDR by the services per the recommendation of the city engineer, Corwin's Crossing Force Main.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to recommend that the council approve, you signing as agent, just signing the contract with HDR to do this, put an agreement with HDR Engineering for this amount of 26-5.
Second, Mayor. The motion is second, and as we said earlier, the actual agreement that we'll execute will have Corwin's Crossing, instead of Corwin's Creek language in there. That'd be the one change. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Then all in favor, then signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. All right. Our sect, Cemetery Sect has been busy as you might expect. We've got quite a few cemetery deeds.
Councilman Hibbs was gonna recuse on Dixie Hibbs. I don't know if you wanna do that one first, right, or how you're gonna handle that?
Might be C and D.
C and D together.
C and D together.
Okay, well, I'd like you to recuse yourself as well.
And it's pleasant outside, so he won't...
Aye.
He's dying.
So we have Dixie Hibbs and Mary Taylor transferring one grave to Ronnie D. and Francis J. Clark. And then Ronnie D. and Francis J. Clark are purchasing two graves. I would ask them for a motion to approve those two transactions.
But you'd have his consent?
I guess we could. If y'all go with that. Okay, Betty, if you ask, Franklin, come back in. And then under cemetery deeds, we have Tyra D. Labris, one grave, Alfred E. and Judy A. Underwood, two graves, James N. and Marcia Clark, two graves, Robert and Kathy Wilkerson, two graves, and Mark Johnson, one grave. We can approve that by your consent if revising agreement. Okay. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda that I can tell. I see it says five adds, but there's not anything.
I can say the sale of graves has significantly...
Slowed down...
Onto clerk duties as opposed to...
Obligation.
I guess these came in before the price went into effect.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else coming from the council, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Yes, by Councilman Williams, that's a second.
Second.
Councilman Hibbs, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you all. Thank you.